Put my handbag.
Yeah, they're back.
Like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of Alderman.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderwoman Pusa.
Here.
Alderman Bitner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Dittelman.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Weigand.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
Before I go a second farther, Jane, we're so glad you're back with us.
Thank you.
She's remarkable. Roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Phil Clay. Fire Chief Tom Corr.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitrait.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Human Resource Director Sherry Faber Salvatore.
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation W. Belvo.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Wastewater Royce Carlyle.
Here.
Interim Director of Residential and Commercial Development Services Inissa McCaswell.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here.
Chief Clay is excused. Captain Heffernan is here on his behalf. I think it's everybody else, isn't it? Okay, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask those who are able to stand with me for the pledge.
My pledge is two to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just real quick, because there might be a few new folks in here, if we ever had to leave this council chambers for some reason of smoke or fire, we would ask that you carefully and cautiously exit the building in the lobby, front or back, but we would ask that possible, I know it's cold tonight, but try to go over towards the courthouse by the front of the sign so that we can check with everybody if the people you came with got out. If we ever had a storm or severe weather, the poor people in Alabama last night, I mean, that storm was devastating when you watched the news, how quick it happens. We would, the police or the city employees would escort you across the lobby to the door right across from the clerk's office is the steps to the basement where we have adequate storm shelter and facilities that is deemed to be safe. So, we would ask that you follow those leads if that ever happened. Tonight, if you do in a moment, when I go to oral comments, public participation, if you would then come to the front and use the microphone after I call on you and speak into the microphone, and same Alderman, make sure you speak into the microphones. We're still having an occasional problem on some of the tapes catching some of your comments because we're not, I'm guilty too. We've got to get right into the microphones and speak. So, at this time, we have no public hearing this evening. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak at public participation? We're going to, you're going to be actually in the, under presentations, ma'am. I will call the U fine ladies up in just a moment. So, if there's no one else that wants to speak at public participation that's not already scheduled to speak, I'm going to close public participation. And now, we're going to get on to the first order of business. I'm going to call two high school students from Belvo East forward. Kalen Schwebel and Will Pageant are from Belvo East High School, and they're going to give the word of the month for character, our character word.
Hi, everyone. As you said, I'm Kalen Schwebel. I am a junior at Belvo East.
I'm Will Pageant. I'm a freshman at Belvo East.
And they're both in the Basic Initiative, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, who's going to speak?
This month's character word is perseverance, and perseverance means staying with the task and not giving up.
I just want to say, you know, we listen, if you're not, if Basic is not here on a given city council night, we make sure that we read the character word of the month. But, we are very impressed with and very proud of the Basic Initiative. We know that you guys do a great job in assisting charities in the city. I know that you, you've been educated a lot about different needs that go on in your community. I know that you go to the schools, and I know that you do mentoring and tutoring, and all these things are outstanding character, and that's why you were chosen to be in this organization. But, the city recognizes that the participation from East, West, and Altof, and I think I'm correct, right? All three of you participate. It's been a fabulous program, and we thank you for taking time tonight and being here, okay?
Thanks.
Very good. Thanks.
Thank you.
At this time, there's a couple of young ladies here tonight, I believe, want to come forward and make a presentation about this year's Shriners Parade 5K. The committee, they're going to make a presentation to the Parks Department, so if I can have, I see the Honorable Laura Grandies here, and Carol, you coming forward?
Yes.
And Deb, and Jason, you want to come up?
Carol.
We stay outside the intersect.
Who's that? Who else is there that's not coming up? Who you, who you pointing out? Yeah. Jenny? Yeah, go ahead. See that? Did you see that finger? I'm staying here. My knee hurts.
I know you folks want to get home, so we'll make this quick. We're here tonight on behalf of the Shriners 5K run. We do this run every year, immediately preceding the parade, and we are appreciative of the city allowing us to have this run. And each year, half of the proceeds go to Belvo Parks and Recreation for their children's program. We hope they'll use it to help kids that maybe can't afford or otherwise be able to participate in those programs, or whatever needs they have to fill. It's theirs, and we know they put it to good use. The other half of the money we raise goes to the Shriners Hospital. So, all in all, the run is for the kids. It benefits the children in and around the area. We're always thankful for the dream team that works on the committee. We have Carol Bartle here, who's happy to pick your pocket for any good cause. She raises more money than anyone I know. Back here, we have Carol Belvo. She has the potential to just ream in volunteers. If you're her friend, tag you're at, you are volunteered. We have Debbie Belvo, who on behalf of the City Parks Department helps bring her troops together to assist us by collecting our reservations or registration forms, and we have Jenny, who's just a miracle worker. She, Jenny Vermyer, she can figure out any thing we need to figure out, like, well, how do we get this road blocked or whatever. She knows the people to call, and so it's just the absolute dream team working on this run, and this year, we're happy to give a check for $5,000 again, and to date, that's almost $20,000 we've been able to give to Parks and Recreation, and we're happy to do that. And we thank our sponsors. I know, Garrett, we pick your pocket, I think, every year as well. We appreciate that. And there's other people probably in this room I'm missing who will hit you up, Steve Roger. And so, we want to thank you all, and thanks for letting us do this every year.
Thank you, Judge. Nice way to start the meeting.
Yeah.
In these times of all the state money cuts and everything, it's great to have these kind of programs, and we have a couple of them like this throughout the year where our Parks Department or different agencies benefit, and we are appreciative. But, once again, that speaks volumes about the volunteer spirit in Belvo. Okay, we go on to the regular part of the meeting, and at this time, I would ask number eight on the agenda, is there a motion to approve the city council and executive session minutes from February 19, 2019? Alderman Dittelman, second by Wiggington, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor of receiving and filing those minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Turn the page. We go to claims, payroll, and dispersments. I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of $1,495,245.78, and the payroll in the amount of $851,695.23. Motion by Consilla, second by Elmore, any discussion on the claims or payroll? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oral reports. The first one is, as we talked about before, and we've had done this before, we have a, many years ago, I think it was Debbie, 2009, when we moved you into your new office, sound right? After that, sometime after that, we kind of did a little remodeling of the house that is in the park, at Lattimer Park, 1105 Mascota Avenue, and for a long time, Bob Sable, who was then a police lieutenant, and then housing director after that, for about 10 years, Bob lived in, or close to, nine years, lived in that, him and his wife, on the property. Tonight, we have in front of you a proposal to allow Master Sergeant Shane Brown to occupy the residence. I think the letter, I don't have it right in front of me, Jenny, but it's in her packet, right?
Correct.
With the terms and conditions that Garrett had drafted, similar to that of before, but this puts a police officer in the park. We have it spelled out in a letter of, you know, what things he must pay for, and et cetera. And I think it's an important deal. I think it's very important to have. We've, one thing, and I can't sit here and show you any exact statistics, but Chief Clay and I, and Assistant Chief Ice Cant and others have strongly agreed, and I think Debbie Belvo and Jason would agree, having someone in that park, there's a lot of program in that park, having someone living there, and having a police car parked there a lot of the times, has been a great deterrent to maybe additional problems that we might have experienced. So, it's been a very good thing, and I would strongly recommend that someone might make this motion 11A1.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Gah from that ward. Do we have any discussion on this, anybody? Roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries. As I mentioned before, I think in one of the committee meetings, there's a small amount of some painting we're going to do and a little new carpet. It's, we've got stuff in our budget to cover that. We're okay. Jamie and I and Kenny have worked on that, but it's not a tremendous amount of stuff at this time. We do have some exterior, either painting or siding, we need to think about. We're working on this year's budget, but I just want to make you aware upfront. But, we've got to keep the house, number one, we've got to keep it up to code, and number two, we want to keep it looking good in the park, but it's really pretty minor, pretty minor adjustments, okay? All right, moving on, the next thing is a motion I'm asking from administration to approve. We have a couple lots, 804 and 808 South High Street. They've been empty. We've been cutting them for about every three weeks, and probably at times when we get that hot, steamy weather, they get pretty high. We have a, the Belvo Urban Gardens Social Club wants to put in a community garden, and they will cut the remainder of the lot, right Laurie?
Yes.
So, we won't have to worry about, this is one lot, we won't have to cut this year. We know it'll be a much improved item to that neighborhood far as the upkeep and the look. And we have a community gardens over at Bicentennial Park with some of the neighbors over there, and we have one out on South 95th Street with the Signal Hill Association. So, we know that they've been very positive and that they work. So, tonight, I'm asking for a motion to approve property use agreement between the city of Belvo and the Belvo Urban Garden Social Club for unimproved real estate at 804 and 808 South High Street in Belvo. Alderman and Gah, second by Alderman Steele, any discussion on this request? Roll call.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 11A3 is the next adjustment due to retirements coming up. Our dear friend Sherry, who's been our HR Director for about two and a half years, I'm going to be close to that right at, who's done an excellent job helping us with a lot of different aspects of training and employee handbook and all kinds of things. As you know, when we consolidate and took over the township, it, I think it looked real simple, and actually, it was very, went smooth. But, an awful lot of what you didn't see, and an awful lot of the smoothness was due to Sherry, and was due to her perseverance in managing this and recruiting and helping find the right people to staff it and train it. And I will tell you today, if any of you were to reach out to our friends who have always worked with the township, even served on the township board, trustee Joe Hubbard, but he and Jerry Hosensstob and Bill Creep, Bill served as the chairman when we did the task force in studying, you might remember, to take on the township government. These three people who have worked tirelessly all their lives with the homeless and with helping people raise themselves up will tell you that they are so very proud of our general assistance and community assistance department since we've taken it over, and I have to give the three young ladies in that pew right in the front there, but particularly Sherry for being the orchestrator and finding the Christines and the Amys, and interviewing them and bringing them to us to say, this is the team we need to take the leadership in here day to day. So, Sherry's retiring on April 10th. I'm sorry, May 10th. Oh, please, not a, I should have said June 10th, and that would have been, that would have been a typical Friday and slip because I want to keep you longer. But, May 10th is Sherry's last day. Now, we're asking tonight, when we started talking about, we're going to start advertising, probably tomorrow, for a human resource director, and we're going to start advertising for our IT director, who's going south to the warmth in July, I think it is, right Rich? And so, we still got those two adjustments to make. But, Sherry and I talked about it. When we started talking about this extra duty she took on, she came to me and said that she had had some conversation with one of our current employees, and soon as she told me about what she was thinking, I said, that's really a no-brainer. So, I called Leander Spearman to my office with Sherry and said, are you truly interested? And I knew he had a passion for this because Leander has helped us and has been dealing with homeless situations at the library since he's been there. And Leander, you told me the other day, and I lost track, how many years you been there?
Eight years.
That's what I thought. And let's face it, folks, our two libraries are really the front door for a lot of people who are struggling and trying to get out of the cold or the extreme heat. It's one of their first stops. So, Leander has been going with Sherry to some of these community meetings, and some of these networking meetings, and the homeless backbone meetings, and he's already developed a rapport with Christine and Amy. So, I don't think they're here tonight to say they don't want Leander. They like, they like the relationship. They're very worried about losing Sherry to retirement or for her changing directions in her life again. But, we, we're recommending tonight, my recommendation and motion is to approve the reorganization proposal for community development slash human resources, this one-year pilot program. And once again, we're doing these realistically, and that's to say, let's try them. If they don't work, we'll have to readjust. But, a one-year program goes into effect May 1st. The Belvo Public Library Board of Trustees on February 14th, they unanimously voted support of this reorganizational proposal. So, I wanted you to know that. So, that's the first motion that you would agree to the reorganization. We can do this, the first 11A3 and 11A4, if some would like to, maybe they would read them both, include them both together, because the second one goes right into this, and that motion appoints Leander Spearman as the interim director of the community development in addition to his current position as librarian. This is with the one-year stipend in the amount of $10,000, effective May 1st, 2019. Now, I'm sorry?
May 5 goes with this as well.
Well, we can do that too, really. I was, that, yes, we can, we will. Let me explain this last one though. Sherry's been, a portion of her salary has been coming out of community and general assistance for managing that. Correct, Jamie? And so, we wanted you to understand that this is, because there's, I'm not saying it's going to take him, the library board was unanimous, I want to repeat that, on their decision to allow this to happen. So, they're not worried that Lee's going to be pulled because he's already doing a lot with this program and the homeless situation that he's got, that he deals with at the library. But, he'll be working on the budget for this program. He'll be working with us on the grants that come in for the community development side. He'll be working with these two young ladies to troubleshoot anything. But, they have already created a network of support from the Joe Hubberts and the Jerry Hosensstobs and the Bill Creeps and so many people, that their network of getting advice and referrals is amazing. So, and I guess if you're willing to, let me explain, we can make this one motion, there's one more phase of this, is that okay if we include it? The last part is 11A5, and that would be the additional one-year stipend in the amount of $5,000, effective May 1st, to Peggy Hartman, the risk manager, human resource, and community development assistant, to cover her increased duties to activate neighborhoods, attend meetings, and assume additional duties as written in her revised job description. Peggy's been helping in this transition to a degree at times, but I told Sherry when she came, we had to get the township duties transferred, and we admit that we have, and we need to get back in really full force. We have a great neighborhood network program that's kind of sat a little bit, we're taking on the township and general assistance and community assistance. We haven't been able to give it, you know, there's only so much that we can do, and we feel like, and Peggy's willing to step up another rung on the ladder and help us by attending a lot of those meetings, working to help network that. That'll work with the police department and the housing department, where all these neighborhood meetings usually are requesting one of them to be present, and we just feel like, if we're going to continue to strengthen neighborhoods, this is a key ingredient that we need. So, tonight, I'm asking that 11A3, 11A4, and 11A5 be considered as one motion, if you so would, to move us forward in the things I just covered. Alderman Pusa, and second by Alderman Schaefer, I now open it up for discussion. Anybody? Alderman Wiggington?
Just a side note, Mayor, I was on the library board when we hired Leander, and which was a great choice. He jumped right in, turned around a struggling library system, saw the reconstruction of the main building, and I don't think we could have a better person head up Director of Community Development as Leander.
Thank you. I agree with you. And now, the other thing, keep in mind, you read, if you read the packet that came in your drop box, this is going to free up Eric Schouster, you know, after that move a couple weeks ago, you know, you always got the backlash of criticism from a few. I'm not saying in this room, but from a few out there. Eric Schouster was doing the community development with some of the networking, and that, he will be, you know, that's where Leander will take that over totally, and Eric is going to be more free for even more duties in economic development.
That's what we need.
So, that's one of the things I wanted to make sure I stressed, and I think that's spelled out in that booklet pretty clearly, okay? So, we have a motion by Alderman Pusa, we have a second by Alderman Schaefer. Any other questions? Roll call. Oh, you want to, why, okay, we don't need to vote them individually.
No, you kind of, you said a motion to read them together.
Yeah. So, this first motion is to read them together. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, we can have a. Yeah, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Want me to read them?
I'm done talking.
Okay, all right. 11A3, motion to approve the reorganization proposal for community development, human resources. This one-year pilot program will go into effect May 1st, 2019. The Belvo Public Library Board of Trustees met on February 14, 2019, and they are in unanimous support of this reorganization proposal. 11A4, motion to appoint Leander Spearman as interim director of community development in addition to his current position of library director, with an additional one-year stipend in the amount of $10,000, effective May 1st, 2019. 11A5, motion to approve an additional one-year stipend in the amount of $5,000, effective May 1st, 2019, to Peggy Hartman, risk manager, human resources, and community development assistant, to cover increased work to activate neighborhoods, attend meetings, and assume additional duties as written in the revised job description.
I'm asking for a motion to approve these three. Motion by Schaefer, a second by Pusa. Any other questions now? Roll call vote on these, on this motion.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for allowing us to give this an interim shot. I go over to 11B. I'd ask for a motion coming from finance, Mr. Consilla.
I make a motion to approve authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the lowest, most responsible bidder for natural gas supply for city accounts, as bid by our consultants, Energy Plus Associates and Good Energy.
Motion from Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Tyler. Do I hear discussion on this item? Roll call.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Communications. Anybody opposed if we read them together?
No, we'll read them together.
Okay, move forward there, Ms. Jenny.
12A, Keep Belvo Beautiful Citywide Litter Pickup, Saturday, April 27, 2019. Request from Basic Youth Board to hold the Keep Belvo Beautiful Citywide Litter Pickup on April 27, 2019, as a volunteer extension of Belvo Helping Belvo Day. 12B, Shriners 5K, Friday, 5:31, 2019. Request from the Shriners Parade 5K Committee to hold a 5K prior to the parade, starting at 6:15 PM, from Union United Methodist Church to Sixth Street. Street closure from Douglas Avenue to Forest, 5:00 PM for start and finish and setup. Streets reopen after the parade. Rolling street closures along route during the run to reopen after the parade. City services requested. Police officers as requested for parade tables, chairs, trash toders, water jugs, rakes, barricades, safety cones, and safety vests. 12C, Oktoberfest, Friday, 9/20/2019, and Saturday, 9/21/2019. Request from the Belvo Oktoberfest Committee to hold the Oktoberfest on September 20th and 21st, 2019, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Street closure request, Thursday, September 19th, 2019, 12:00 PM. West Main Street, from Illinois Street to east side of Second Street, 5:00 PM. First block of north, south, and east of Fountain, and East Main Street, from the east side of High Street to the west side of Jackson Street. High Street remains open. Streets to reopen by 3:00 AM on Sunday, September 22nd, 2019. Car show, street closure, closure Saturday, September 21st, 2019, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. East Main Street, from Jackson Street to west side of Charles Street, including the first block, north and south of Jackson and Church Street. No vehicles from car show to be parked on South Jackson. City services requested. Barricades, police personnel, no parking signs, cleanup of streets, electric picnic tables, and other items as requested. 12D, Old Belvo Historic Luminary Walk, 1214-19. Request from Belvo Historical Society, Gustav Kerner House, St. Clair County Historical Society, and neighbors of Abin and Garfield, to hold the Old Belvo Historic Luminary Walk Saturday, December 14th, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Street closure request, East Garfield from Mascota Avenue to Abin Street, and Abin Street from East Lincoln to East Garfield, 12:00 PM to 9:30 PM. Additional requests of barricades and street sweeping prior to events.
Do I hear a motion to approve these requests? Alderman Gah, second by Alderman Steele. This was the communications that she just read, which were 12- This was the communications that she just read, which were 12A, 12B, 12C, and 12D. Any questions? Have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving these requests signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no petitions. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3352, 3353, and 3354. Motion by Joe Hazel, second by Consilla.
As a group.
As a group, yes, and by title only. Is that all understood? All in favor, that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
14A, Resolution 3352, a resolution of support for the City of Bellevue Program Year 2019, application for community development, lack grant funding. 14B, Resolution 3353, a resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route 159 for the I-9 Shriners Parade and 5K, May 31, 2019. 14C, Resolution 3354, a resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route 159 for the Oktoberfest, September 19 through the 22, 2019.
Motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Gah, to approve those requests from communications, I'm sorry, resolutions, to, motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Gah, to approve the resolutions, 3352, 3353, and 3354. Any further questions? Roll call.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session. Main purposes, yes, sir?
Yeah, Mayor, before we go into executive session.
Sure.
Do you have any kind of like updated substance regarding the merit at all?
Talked to Mike Lundie two weeks ago. Mike, and I don't know, some of you talked to me individually, when the federal government was shut down for, I guess, what, about six weeks, the HUD tax credits were a part of the slowdown, because that agency didn't work. So the closing that was supposed to happen, we were told, the end of February, is a few weeks behind now. So Mike is still investigating some of the, and they're still doing their due diligence, and he's hoping he will keep me advised, but all we know is that the original date of a February closing was pushed back. I don't have an exact date, but it had oddly enough a trickle-down effect even from the federal government shutdown.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? At this time, then, I'm asking for a motion to go into executive session. There's, the only item really tonight is discussion of property acquisition, and then you have a settlement.
Yes, we have property acquisition under Section 2C5 of the Open Meetings Act and